Call this meeting to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands in our nation, with its law, its liberty, and justice for all.
Call for the motion for the acceptance of the minutes of the October 27, 2020 meeting.
Remove.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor, opposed, motion carries. Public forum, nobody here this evening, we'll move on to board reports, correspondents, nothing from me, board members, Reverend Collins?
I've been getting some questions about our programming as far as our television. People have been asking me, we got all the sports, we're putting all the sports, can we do anything more educational, there's some educational programs that we can put out to use it more constructively and add that from four or five people within the community, so I just want to bring it up, I brought it to the superintendent, some of them told me that they had talked about it before and we hadn't gone anywhere.
We will definitely meet with the high school, the teachers involved there in the high school to see what we can, you know, move forward.
Anybody else? Superintendent Wiles?
I have just a few things. On a negative note to start out with, the school district received a letter from the state education department on last Friday regarding our transportation aid, and while there are many different organizations advocating to have this not happen, the state advised us that for the period of last year, from March until June, when we were not running our buses to transport students to school, when we were closed and the governor closed the schools, but we did use the buses to deliver supplies home and also meals, the state education department advised us that we should not count on any transportation aid for that period of time, even after it was discussed with us about supporting our contracts and supporting our students with their meals. We're in the process of advocating through the New York State Council of Superintendents, New York State Association of School Business Officials, NICE, the teachers' unions to really advocate to have this not happen, Vince will work up some numbers on what those estimates are, but 70% of our costs for transportation are aided for us, so we count on that aid, the loss of any aid for a three-month period would just increase the amount that the district would not have. I do feel compelled to talk about the 20% decrease in aid, and while it's not a decrease right now, they have with, the state has withheld aid from our first few payments, we're hoping that there's, there could be a stimulus package coming up, we have not heard anything, we have not heard anything about a deduct in December, just that the, you know, economics in the state continue to falter, you know, some of us believe that the decrease in the transportation aid is just a way, another way to recover, you know, monies from the school districts, but it's a significant development that we got this from state ed, the state education department said that the regions as part of their 21, 22 proposal for state aid is asking for that to be made whole, we haven't gotten anything specific that, you know, from the finance areas that they're deducting it, but we've heard the warning and every time there's been a warning like this, we've seen a deduction. So we're tracking our fund balance as we always do and our expenditures, and there are some savings this year, there's some costs this year that are unexpected with the PPE and all of that, so just more to come, but they are withholding, they've told us that they'll be withholding our transportation aid.
John?
So Mrs. Wiles, let me see if I have this correct, so last year when we closed down, the governor issued edicts that we had to provide meals to all kids and those things, so obviously we take our buses and we provide it to the kids throughout the district, and now saying that we might not receive aid for that time because we weren't using our buses for instruction, for bringing kids into instruction, and I brought this up once before, and I know you were a little hesitant because you think that our good governor might be a little bit retaliatory, if we were to send him a letter saying, these are the costs that we've incurred, could you please reimburse us these monies that we spent to follow the edicts that you issued on our kids and send it as a board of education up to him, I mean, you know, to say we're fearful to send that because he might take actions against us, he's taken actions throughout the last year, and nothing's going to get better, so if it needs be, I'll make a motion and we can draft up a letter as a board of education and send it to him to point out, nothing will get done, but at least
We'll do it.
we'll have done it.
Vince is working up the numbers now, we've been keeping track on the expenses that we're incurring, we'll see what the impact is for transportation, Vince, I and Kelly will work on a draft letter, present it to the board, see if you want to include anything else and do kind of a historical timeline to present to you.
Thank you.
And I think, I do think it's important, I think these, I think, you know, I think the, the difference between using the word withhold and reduce and transportation aid and aid, state aid, general aid, I think it's misleading, and I think that there's obviously, you tell us you don't withhold aid, but you release the aid that has to be paid to the teacher's retirement system, which is very important, you know, those payments have to be made, but that's the bulk of that first payment that wasn't withheld, it was paid to another state agency, so, look, I just want our aid, I, we don't want to have to reduce the budget anymore, and we want to be made whole, and, you know, we're working hard, we're spending money, we're spending money on PPE and masks and all this other stuff, and, look, we trans, we had, we have contracts that we were obligated to pay, that were approved by the state education department, it's not that we opted to pay them, we were legally and financially responsible for paying those contracts, and we were mandated to provide meals home to parents and to do those things, so I think a letter is in order for sure, and I want to make sure we get all of our numbers correct and we have our, an estimate from state aid planning on what those, you know, what that reduction's going
And it's a double-edged sword because he cuts or withholds and then issues unfunded mandates
Right.
that cost money, it doesn't work.
Wayne?
In addition, I'd like to, when we have those numbers from Vince, of all these unfunded mandates that have come down and the withholding, because he's withheld 20%, I think we should send a copy of our letter, as well as a copy of all the numbers, to all the newspapers for them to put in the newspaper, maybe some other schools will come and board into the
Yeah, I think our legislators also should have them.
Reverend Collins?
I was going to second John's motion if we were to do it, because I'm highly disturbed, first of all, because it seems that every time something comes up, education is the first thing that gets, that gets hit, with all of the struggle that we're going through to try to do what they want us to do or what we need to do, it's hard enough without trying to figure out where you're going to get the penny from to do it, without us, without them seeing we're going to withhold, or without them seeing we're not going to pay for your use of buses, that budget was already set for us to spend money for those buses, it was already there, it was already approved, there shouldn't be anybody taking anything back from that when we completed what you mandated for us to do for that year, all of those things are things that we need to really document to the max and then make public to the max every time they take a penny from it, I don't think we can sit back and hide anymore or feel sorry for them anymore, I know everybody's losing money, but you've been telling us for years, education is the most important thing going, we put it before health, we put it before everything else along the way, if that's so, quit stealing from it, go on and let us do our job, but I think it's time we really made that known, got behind it and pushed it, hollered it if we have to every chance we get, so that everybody feels that more.
Agreed, agreed. Yep, I have two other things, we posted up onto Facebook a notification that on, from November 16th through November 30th, we will be, there'll be an email that's sent home to parents to complete a survey, it's a climate survey, it's required by the state education department, we have been working with a company called Panorama, and really what the survey does, and I think we had given you a copy of the survey in the last packet, we're trying to get feedback from the community, from parents, from teachers, from staff, from all the stakeholders in the school about, about climate, about how they feel about the school, their interactions with the school and other questions, we really encourage you to respond to the survey, we are sending a letter home to parents on Thursday about the survey, and for parents that don't receive the email or don't have an email, if they contact their main office, we'll have something in place so you can take the survey either manually or some other medium, so it's really important that the information we get back is required as part of our school improvement processes and the meetings that our school improvement teams are going to have to collect and really take heed to, you know, the surveys and the, and the feedback that we get, so that's coming, that window is from November 16th to the 30th, and then that survey will go out again in the spring to measure any growth or progress from our parents, so that is coming, watch for your email, there's an email going to every household, and if you don't get one and you want to complete one, contact the office and we'll get that for you. The last thing is, there'll be another letter going home at the end of the week, there's been some questions, some phone calls I've received that'll be returned tomorrow regarding the return of students in grades seven through 12, I know that initially we had talked about the date of November 30th or December 1st, but we've been in the process of really laying out the classrooms, looking at cohorts, making sure that we can safely bring our students back, and we'll be writing a letter home that the tentative date for a return to 7/12 will be January 4th, right after the holiday. Now I'm going to say this here and I'm going to say it in the letter, we all have to be prepared as the time goes on here over the next few months to what people are calling a pivot back to a remote learning, because we can see the numbers are increasing, right after Halloween, they increased the COVID numbers, there's concerns about after Thanksgiving and after the holidays when families are together, people are traveling, so we're going to watch it closely, but we are planning on a return 7/12 back on January 4th, and if that changes, we will communicate that out to you, we're looking at a couple of other maybe modifications in the hybrid model in the elementary school, but the elementary school principal's working on, you know, some different, some possibilities about students that are attending to school if the classrooms permit, if they can come both weeks as opposed to every other week, so we are trying to see if we can modify in all types of ways as we move forward, remember, this is not something, there's no playbook for this, and we're taking this one step at a time, our priority is to keep our staff and our students safe first and foremost, but we are looking at a January 4th 7/12 return. The areas we're struggling with are cafeteria, it will be a full day return, we're struggling with cafeteria, gym, those areas where there's more than just one class together, but we're working on solutions, so we'll bring, continue to bring updates at the next forthcoming board meetings, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, Mrs. Kelly White.
Good evening, just an update, which I'll be doing at each of our board meetings on the Ellenville PTEC Academy, so we had a meeting this week at BOCES to map out some of the key events that will be happening this year, and I shared several of these events with you, I believe two board meetings ago, about some of the work that we finalized in our most recent meeting was working on the timeline, finalizing the timeline of events this year specifically focusing around curriculum work that needs to be done and the training for project-based learning and workplace challenges that teachers and administrators are going to need, because that's very different from the traditional teaching and learning models and site visits, so when we do identify staff, we will have to prioritize time for that staff to receive the training they need to effectively teach and learn under that new model. We also worked on putting together visions for what grades nine, 10, 11, and 12 through 14 look like for our students, and at our next meeting on November 18th, we're going to be working on some of the more detailed scope and sequence work, so our goal for our next board meeting is to have a more formal presentation so that you can see some of this work in print and get an idea of where we stand with the PTEC Academy. As Ms. Wiles said, we are going to, we are in the process of still developing our school improvement plans, so we have our building strategic action committees that are up for approval this evening, and if approved, we'll be working with them later this week on developing the district's comprehensive improvement plan, which is one of the mandated activities under the school improvement grant, so we'll be working with the committees hopefully later this week on that, and after our district plan is submitted, we'll begin working on the middle schools, school comprehensive education plan. The curriculum committee, there was a request from Geneva for an update on where we were with our Black History course, our curriculum committee meeting that was scheduled for November 2nd was canceled because we had an early dismissal that day due to the power outage, so the meeting has been rescheduled for November 16th, so at that meeting, we will, we'll talk with the committee to see where we are and the work that needs to be done to see if that's something we can bring into our programs. An update with our substitute teachers, we trained an additional five, five substitutes since our last board meeting, one was recently approved, we have another one that we're recommending this evening for hiring, and we interviewed another candidate this week, which we'll be checking references on, so we're continuing to have a rolling trainings for substitutes as they, they become available, we have a pretty lengthy list of substitutes that still haven't received training because either they're in school right now and they're finishing their semester in December and plan to be home for a while, or they're wrapping up their schooling in December and will be home from that point forward, so we'll be definitely pushing out more training as some of our college-level substitutes come home, and then we also have parents in the district that serve as substitutes, but they're waiting until January when their students, a couple of them I know are switching their students back to in-person learning in January and their availability will free up and they're interested in receiving training and coming back as a substitute. At the last board meeting, we also spoke about the high school or the district's Instagram account, so the BOCES did get that up and running for us, as of this afternoon, we had 87 followers on the site, we, the high school student council groups are really trying to promote it to the high school students so they can push information out regarding student events, but, you know, we encourage our adult community to follow along if they're an Instagram user as well, so anytime we push something out through Facebook, it's also at the same time going to go out through our Instagram page so that we're capturing different audiences. And last thing I wanted to touch base at, touch base on is, I'm hoping by the, the next board meeting to put together a more formal request, but I want to respond to the teachers' requests for more professional development, so in your board packet, I did put down a recommendation, so I'm thinking based on the, the number of survey responses that we have is providing teachers with maybe an option to take two additional hour and a half of classes based on the survey feedback that was provided and get them some after-school training, and I'm going to take a look, a deeper look at what their requests are and the company that we contracted with already that we have still five days of professional development with, if, if we can approve this to put together some offerings for them for, to sign up maybe after the holiday season or maybe right before, for some opportunities for another class or two to get more comfortable with some of the technology that they're using.
John?
Thank you, Kelly, I had a question on the survey, it said here there were 66 responses, how many teachers do we have that seems like a low number on responses on training?
About instructional, 125 teachers.
So, we got half the responses, I was one of the people that pushed for more professional development, I think it was worthy, but the second go-around now, would it be prudent for us to take a look at the higher percentages that each one wanted?
Yes.
For example, only six teachers wanted Google Classroom, maybe that would be something we wouldn't offer, Google Meet, and maybe just offer the five or six that are higher up in the categories.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking, and for the teachers that still needed support on things that we have been pushing out for years, I'm going to remind them that they have access, we, every teacher has what's called an Otis account, which they have access at any time to online videos for using Google Classroom, Google Meet, that they can watch on their own, and they can collect continuing education credits towards their certification so that there wouldn't be payment for them, but for teachers that have the new certification, they can print the completion certificates and maintain their professional development requirement for their certification.
Thank you, my last question was on the bottom of the chart there, did we, 27.3% wanted training, but there's no description there that I can see, am I missing something?
Let me see if that misaligns.
Undergreen pop?
Yeah, I was trying to see if something misaligned, let me, I'll have to go back into the survey, I can let you know at the end of the meeting what that was.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Iris?
And also, there's a note here about parent technology training, is that, is that a first for us?
Yeah, so this was a request when we, when we did our reopening survey for parents over the summer, there was a question in there about if parents, you know, if they would need additional support, and there was a good percentage of parents that said that they could use some additional support in helping their children at home with remote learning tools, so we had sent up, sent out a follow-up survey, maybe about three weeks ago, we had 14 parents respond, primarily they're interested in, in learning how to use Google Classroom, we asked them what their availability was, so for those 14 parents, we have their contact information and when they're available, and I know with, with Frank Mulhern through my brother's keeper, he sets up a lot of our parent engagement activities, but with the special education group that's coming in to do the special education review, there's some required activities under family and community engagement, so I want to work with Frank and the special education group to see what type of training we can put together for the parents, because there is an interest, and I think, once we formally announce it and put the dates out there, there'll probably be even more of an interest, I would assume.
I'm just very glad to see you.
Yeah, no, I think I want to try to get it organized and put out by early December.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mr. Napoli?
Thank you, the only thing I'd like to point out is, tonight, the budget calendar is up for adoption, and one of the things that we're going to try this year, we're having the same number of budget workshops, but we're rolling a couple of them at the regular board meetings, and so please note, especially for the public, that on those days, the board meetings will start at 7 o'clock, which will be, the start of the board meeting will be the budget workshop, calendar will get posted for people to see so that the press knows what time to be here, so that's what's going on with the budget calendar, and that's all I have.
So, just want to go back to the superintendent, she wanted to say something about the Instagram.
So, I know that Kelly said that we did open an Instagram account, I just want to share with you that our Instagram account, nobody can post pictures to it, it's just, it runs, so that it's just what we post up, but I think that there's some confusion if you search, if you just put Ellenville in and it's not Ellenville Central School District, you can see a lot of different posts that are not related to us, so if you have any concerns, you know, bring it forward to us, but we are strictly monitoring what gets posted on our, on our Instagram account, and nobody can post to it, so I just wanted to share that, because that, I got a couple of concerns about that today.
It does say too, if you want to make sure you're following the right page, it says the official Instagram page of the Ellenville Central School District, because there is another account that says Ellenville CD, I think, or SD, that's not ours, ours has the current school logo on it, and then it says the official account when you open the...
Right. We're trying to see if there's any way to look at the other thing, because anyone can post to that account, so I, we just don't want it to be misconstrued that it's our account, you know, so it's, we have our logo and, so just, just as an FYI, if you hear anything, you know, we're carefully monitoring and controlling what gets posted up.
Thank you. Oh, Iris, sorry.
Yeah, I, I know that the calendar, the budget calendar is on here somewhere, I just don't know where it is, I can't find it at the moment, and I didn't really look at it, so you said that we're going to be having regular meetings and budget meetings in the same evening?
Correct.
Well, not the, the first one is going to be all?
The first meeting, when the superintendent and I kick off the budget season, that will be a separate night all in of itself, and then I'll present administrative and some other departments, but then in the subsequent meetings, we will combine the budget workshop along with the regular board meeting, because what we're finding is that in the, in the past, we've, we've gotten pretty good at presenting the budget, so the departments, let's say like the, the buildings, or the smaller ones, we'll combine them with the regular board meeting, and then dedicate maybe half hour, an hour to the workshop, and then we'll dive right into this meeting that we're having tonight.
Well, I think we should try it, but I'm not a big fan of the idea, I think that there are two, there are two distinctly different focuses, and the budget, for all the extra time that we put in, it is, after all, the budget, one of the most serious and important things we do all year, so, and I don't ever expect this to happen, but I remember the day, and I wasn't on the board, when the people were here until 11:30, 12 o'clock at night, because everything was all crunched into one meeting, so...
Well, we're not doing that, so...
Well, I'm willing to give it a try, but I'm not fond of the idea, I'd like to have a school board meeting be distinct from a budget meeting, because they're really two fairly distinct topics.
Understood, and, and there is a day in there that's reserved for another budget workshop that's outside of a regular board meeting, if we find that we run over and we want to have another date, that's in the calendar as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
Onto personnel resolutions for the season.
Oh, what was that? I have a question.
Oh, go on.
I think that we can, we can do those both if we take the smaller things, Vince, like the building reports, they're, they're usually pretty succinct and quick, and, and you did make it sound very exciting as you kick off the, what you referred to as the budget season, I was just hoping that the good governor is also was excited about that, and my question, Lisa, is, how does this match up, are we going to be planning for a budget of the unknown, I mean, how?
Yes, I suspect we will be, so here's, here's what I, here's what I say right now, and this is very speculative, so, based on the election that we just had, there's a, maybe some would argue a stronger possibility that there'll be a stimulus package coming quick, more quickly than maybe before, but if that's the case, and, you know, that doesn't roll out till February or March, the way this, the governor's proposal rolls out is he presents by the end of January a state aid package, and I think usually we don't get a finalized number until April 1st, so our budget workshops usually run from February till April, and then we have to adopt by April, so I'm hoping by the time we get to April 1st next year, we'll have some real numbers on a stimulus package and, you know, what that means for schools, so I'm hoping for that, we're mon, as I said earlier, we're monitoring our spending right now and our fund balance, and we're trying to save wherever we can to scrape together any savings to not be able, you know, we don't want to cut, you know, we don't want to cut any more of our program, so we're, we're really doing what we can to offset that, manage our fund balance through that, and we're really hoping for, you know, light at the end of the tunnel with the economic stimulus package, so we're planning, you know, smart... So we're planning, you know, smartly, and we're trying to be as conservative as we can with that.
I don't know when the budget process has been fun, but I, I know the last, you know, you sit here, and I'm sure all the board members feel the same. You sit here, and the first thing that you think of going into that is we have to make cuts to programs and staffing, and then, and we don't want to do that.
I know. And we, we took a big hit last year, right? And I'm hoping we do not have to repeat that this year, and we can hang on to what we have. You know, our, our enrollment is declining, right? And that will impact the amount of aid we get. You get less aid as more students are not in the buildings over a period of time. That's averaged. The grant money in the past for the title funds have really dried up, and the monies that we do have, we have to share more and more with private schools. So it, they've been, the money's been, even at the federal level, chipped away at. So we're hoping that there's some relief, even if it's for like a year or two with, like, if you go back, I was saying to someone today, the economic stimulus that, package that we got back in 2010 held us through for two years, and then we had, we ended up having to reduce again. But we're really hoping we can maintain what we have right now. But we won't know that until we see, you know, what the, what the numbers look like.
Maybe we can just agree to the three words, only through attrition.
Yeah, I, I'm hope, that's what, and honestly, I do want to say that that's what we were hoping. Even before COVID hit, you know, we knew things were going to get tight. But we have people that are retiring, and as people retired, we knew that our elementary classes, we wouldn't have to replace necessarily elementary tenure area teachers. But we also know that we have a great need for mental health providers in our district. So when people retire, you always have the opportunity to realign the resources, realign what you bring back, what, you know, what positions you don't bring back and so forth, but it never cost anyone their jobs. And we don't want to be back there, and we're hoping that we can move in that direction. But we won't know, we won't, with the tax cap in place, right? And the limit there, and the only other place we'll, we'll be able to get revenue is from the state. So that's where we are.
Thank you.
Last year it was bad. They warned us this year could be worse. We've been buckling down as much as we can, and we're hoping for the status quo next year.
Thank you. Personnel resolutions for this evening, 5.1. Upon a recommendation, superintendent of schools be resolved that Ethan Trynne be appointed on certified substitute teacher at a rated $95 per day work for the 2021 school year.
Second.
Moved to second at discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one. 5.2. Upon a recommendation, superintendent of schools be resolved that the memorandum of agreement between the Ellenville Central School District and the ETS RPA Teachers Unit be approved as attached.
So moved.
Second.
Move second at discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries. 5.3. Upon a recommendation, superintendent of schools be, be it resolved that the following teachers be approved to work on the Building Strategic Planning Committee for the 2021 school year.
Motion to move the list.
Second.
Moved at second at discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries. 5.4. Resolve the board hereby reinstates Ms. Emily Vosper to a teaching position to the elementary tenure area effective July 1st, 2020, in accordance with the terms of the MOA dated November 10th, 2020, attached to the minutes.
So moved.
Check.
Moved at second at discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one.
Point information.
Point information.
So with bringing back this position, we're anticipating through the end of the year, no more cuts.
Correct.
Thank you.
5.5. Leave of absence. Upon a recommendation, superintendent of schools be resolved that Jolene Younger's request for an unpaid leave of absence for the months of November and December be granted effective November 1st, 2020 through January 1, 2021.
So moved.
Moved?
Check.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries. Resignation upon a recommendation, superintendent of schools be resolved that the resignation of Arthur Hayes Cleaner be accepted for the purposes of retirement effective November 20th, 2020 with regret.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to add with regret. Art's a good guy, does a great job cleaning, and I, I think that's important to recognize that.
I think with regret's already in the motion.
It is?
Yes.
Okay. My other point here is, Vince, with the COVID-19 and cleaning, we can go to the list and fill that fairly quickly?
As quickly as we can. There's a posting process, and then there's an interview process, there's a culling process, and then appointment by the board. So we'll do it as quickly as we can.
So we have a plan to make sure that the normal cleaning that was done is, is made up before we get to the filling.
We do.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries. Under budget resolutions, resolve the 21, 22 school budget calendar be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No, opposed? No one. Motion carries. Appointment of counsel, 7.1. Resolve that McGivney, Kluger, Clark, and Tatchia attorneys be appointed counsel to represent the Ellenville Central School District in legal proceedings with regards to the Child's Victim Act as per the included retainer agreement, and be further resolved, the school board authorizes the superintendent to execute said agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries. 8.1. Approval IEPs. Resolve that the attached list of IEPs be acknowledged as appropriate. There are 18.
Move the list that's presented.
Been moved?
Second.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries. Under construction resolutions, resolve that the architect payment for professional services, additional services, reimbursable expenses, invoice number 71524, in the amount of $111,041.30 be approved for Clark Patterson Lee.
Check.
Moved and seconded. Discussion.
Vince, can you just tell us what this covers?
Sure. That's the preparation for the Kapler project. We had a meeting, was it last week? So that's the, that's the design work. They brought in a surveyor to make sure that we weren't in a floodplain for the addition of the cafeteria, some, and some roof inspections.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries. Under other.
Motion move 10-1 through 10-6.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion.
Actually, I have a quick question about these tax roll corrections. So I'm assuming from the names of the, of the organizations, these are religious exemptions?
I have to look at.
So anyway, I guess this is more of a broad question. So if there's a religious exemption on a property, does, does the state make the, the community whole on that, or it just, that's, you just don't get the tax there and that's that?
So what normally happens is, is they, they apply to the assessor for an exemption, and then they get the exemptions before we levy the tax.
Right.
And so I'll use a general number of $10,000. Let's say there's $10,000 of exemptions. That $10,000 gets spread among all the other taxpayers. In this case, what happened here was that these exemptions were not done prior to us issuing the tax bills. So now we have to eat that reduction or that exemption. So that's taxes that we are not going to collect because it came in after I generated the, after we generated the tax bills.
I see. But in general, when a property is exempt, then there, there is no outside.
Nope.
Funding, then that, that amount gets spread out over everybody who is paying their taxes.
That's correct.
I see.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Oh, sorry.
Sorry. I have a question on the excess item on the projectors. I know technology moves at light speed, but we're letting go some of the projectors, the Power Lights 530 that were manufactured in 2019. I can see the 14s and the 16s being outdated. What, are, are these things that we couldn't use, or?
So in grades K through 8, we, using Smart Bond money, we purchased all smart boards that have the projector and the technologies built right into them. So while Moses is retaining some of these for, for use, a lot of them, we don't need anymore. So we're going to try to sell them to get some money from them, and the ones that are in better shape, we're keeping. And then sometimes, believe it or not, the cost of the bulb, to put the bulb in one of[1759.21]